For Isatola Shelby Auto Repair 5023 Mile Road. Expansion to a non-conforming use subject to the submission of a revised site plan addressing all department comments, including the relocation of the outdoor storage and approval by the zoning board of appeals.
Support.
And by Turner's support by Moore. Any questions on motion? Hearing none. Commissioner Turner?
Yes.
Commissioner Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Dalu?
Yes.
Mr. Meredith?
Yes.
Mr. Gonzalez?
Yes.
Please follow the instruction below to attend the meeting. Dial 1312-626-6799. Meeting ID 83137669175. Notice is hereby given that the planning commission for the charter township of Shelby, McComb County, Michigan, has received a request for approval of the following amendment to the zoning map and request for approval of a senior independent living facility applicant Phil Rogeri, mound 25 properties LLC. 43231 Shaner Sterling Heights, Michigan, 48313 rezoning request from R1B single family residential and O1 professional office to R12 multiple family low rise rezoning petition 04-20. The rezoning request also includes site plan for 108 multiple family, multi-family units, two build, three buildings and 36 units each. Location 5657-5711 and 5859 25 mile road northeast corner of 25 mile road and mound Sidwell number 23-07-05-478-006, 23-07-05-478-007, and 23-07-05-478-010. Legal description is as follows. Planning Commission will meet on Monday, November 23, 2020 at 7:00 PM via Zoom for the purpose of holding a public hearing on the conditional rezoning and site plan application. Please follow the instructions to attend the meeting via Zoom. Dial 312-626-6799 and enter the meeting ID access code 83137669175. Please check the Shelby Township Planning website for further information on the meeting. The applicant for rezoning and special land use zoning ordinance text and zoning map may be examined at the planning and zoning department in the municipal building Monday through Friday from 8:30 AM to 5:00 PM. Written comments may be submitted to the planning commission at the above address prior to the hearing. Oral comments will be heard during the public hearing. This notice is provided pursuant to the requirements of Michigan Public Act 110 of 2006 as amended. Shelby Township Planning Commission Jerome Moffett Chair, Raquel Moore Secretary. This was published home daily on November 4, 2020. There were 128 property owners, two applicants and nine utilities were notified by first-class mail on October 30, 2020.
Thank you. Mr. Kirk, did the publication meet all legal requirements?
Yes, it did.
So, oh, to the secretary, did we receive correspondence on this request?
We did, Mr. Chair. Quite a few pieces of correspondence. I don't even know, do you want me to list?
No, I think just maybe just some, I mean, the board have all received copies.
Yeah, the board, we, in fact, we have, Mr. Chair, received a few more in our possession as of today. Another, like, seven more pieces of correspondence in the last day or two, all opposed to the rezoning.
If you believe you can summarize them collectively.
They're basically opposed to the rezoning due to the number of units, traffic noise, and they feel it's overdeveloped for the area.
Okay, thank you. Public hearing for this request will be as follows. The petitioner or representative will make a presentation stating the reasons for their request, the rezoning and proposing the special land use request. The commissioner will then be able to offer this, ask questions. Then I'll open the floor up to the public for any comments or questions they may, anyone may have. And then I'll bring the petitioner back to answer the questions that were raised from the public hearing. At this point, I will ask the petitioner to identify themselves.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the planning commission. For the record, I'm Phil Rogeri as the applicant and partner in this matter. My address is 43231 Shaner Sterling Heights, 48313. I'm going to try to coordinate this presentation with my landscape architect who has a visual of exhibits that he can correlate along while I'm speaking. So hopefully the two will meet. I believe he's, okay, it's showing right now. The name of this project is called Alter. It's an independent active adult community restricted to 55 and up residency. The property itself, if you turn to the next page, Jim, the site itself is at 25 mile and mound, which would be the northwest corner. It consists of 10.43 acres of land. And the, it's nearly a square except for the north, the northeast corner of the site. Next page, Jim? Okay, under the current zoning, we have, on this property, we actually have three zonings. To the far west, you have R1B, which has one of the houses that we presently have on our property, which there are two. The R12 is the current zoning in blue, which encompasses nearly 64% of the property. And then the small portion, O1, to the east is approximately 1.8 acres, which is 17%. So what we have is R1B is 19%. The, the office is 17 and the R12, which is the majority of the property, nearly two-thirds, is R12. Okay, if you could turn to the next page. Okay, this is a presentation of what we proposed for the site. The property's been dormant for many years. Nothing has been done on it. The office has never been built, and that's because there's been really no need for it. No one sought to put commercial because we have a commercial kitty corner and we have across the street to the east. So here's what we've done. As you're familiar with, south on 25, further east adjacent to Mallow and that commercial center, I attempted to rezone some residential and office property for conventional apartments. It was met with heavy resistance by property owners adjacent to the site and those in subdivisions in the near vicinity. I took very careful notes and attention to what their comments were. That ended up being resolved by a consent judgment resulting in 27 site condos or detached homes, if you will. And that project's going to be underway roughly 30 days. We basically got it all done through engineering. Now, because of that particular problem, we had purchased this property, which is in fact zoned primarily R12 because we wanted apartments. If you look at the next page, Jim, if you could turn, if you put the footprint of what we're proposing on the site, you'll see that the R1B section is primarily intact. None of the buildings themselves are touching that R1B to the west. The actual multiple buildings are strictly within the R12. And if you look to the right, we're only carving out, we wanted to carve out the office and just simply insert one building to make it a unified development. Now, currently, our proposal's for 108 units without the office building. At this point, under the current zoning, I can place 80 units under the R12 with no variances restrictions, or under the double density allowance by your ordinance, I could get up to 160 units. Now, the reason I chose, Jim, if you go to the next page, the reason I chose to go with the active adult senior community is number one, to negate all the issues that were raised across the street on that parcel next to the Mallow and the commercial center. Under a age-restricted community, you must be 55 years old and up. There is no exceptions. What that does is you've got an average age of about 70 years old, which are basically retired people, want to live independent, but do not want to go into senior homes because of the cost factors, or they just simply want to maintain their own individuality. And this is the choices that they want to make, and there's a great demand. And by the way, this is our flagship. We have created a new model for senior housing. Being in the senior housing industry myself, this is a very, very attractive alternative source of living by not having to spend $3,000 to $5,000 a month with all the bells and whistles such as dining, et cetera, barber shop, beauty salon and all that. We just cut out all that, made it simplified under a 55 and upper stricken adult community. We've got three buildings. And if you look at the buildings itself, north and south, they have the balconies. They do not go east and west. We've carefully preserved the land. We only have 44% of the site being developed. 56% of this site remains open space. We have a 95-foot berm running from the westerly site going east, which would be the entire section of the R1B property. We have, the property line to the west is 175 feet to buildings two and three. So we've taken into consideration the lone property owner that would be to the west. We have isolated that property owner significantly by putting an extensive amount of landscaping that our landscape architect had designed, which is Jim Epping. We've also added a trail system throughout the complex that provides zones for exercising along the way. We have, we have a, yes, thank you, Jim. And then above, we have our detention pond, which is another natural feature that will stay intact and it'll fill with water. And perhaps we'll put something more decorative on that, a fountain of some sort. Now, to the north, you have a forested wetland area. We are totally maintaining that wetland. And we're going to do that as a, under the PUD proposal. It will never be built. Okay? And then if you look along the perimeter of the property, Jim, if you could go from the north and go along the east side, you see this extensive amount of landscaping that gives it an outstanding commercial appeal. I'm sorry, curbside appeal. We have carefully designated certain shrubbery to tie into our whole building facade. Now, bear in mind, this property can be developed, as I said, as is, with the density that I said. Now, if I wanted to, we could take out, go to the north, Jim, next to building two and to the right of it. That section there where the gazebo is, we technically could go ahead and cut into that wetland under a mitigation plan. And we could add another building under the conventional apartments that we're allowed to do. However, I am a firm believer of maintaining natural states and buffering with landscaping. And as you can see, this entire development is surrounded with an extensive amount of open space and landscaping that totally takes into consideration all abutting property owners. To the north, that extensive landscaping will not allow anybody to the north to be To the north, there, that extensive landscaping will not allow anybody to the north to be impacted. They'll never even see the development from their, their situation. To the west, I was contacted by a lady that, uh, has a house with, she has a white fence and she has a pool and a jacuzzi. She was afraid that this development would impact her privacy. I assured her with ninety-five feet of, of buffering along that technically, uh, R one B section, they would not even see her property. And likewise, we've taken precaution on the buildings. If you look at the building, the way it's laid out, the side of the building faces to the west and to the east. The north and the south of each building have the balconies. So no one on a balcony is going to be looking to the west. It'd have to be a side view of the building, which is non-existent, and it negates any, any particular issue. What you want, what I want to impose upon the board is that with a fifty-five and up active adult community, with the average age generally ranging around seventy years old, you no longer have the traffic congestion that has been brought up across the street. You no longer have the crime factor that was talked about across the street. You no longer have the noise factor that was talked about across the street. And none of the danger or crime that was talked about across the street. This community is very similar to Mr. Lachirko's that's on Shelby Township, or it's in Shelby Township, on Shelby Road between twenty-five and twenty-six, and it's called Park Place Manor. In fact, my mother-in-law lives there. She's eighty-nine years old. God bless her. She wants to live independent. She lives in there. But that's a very nice, attractive development, but his, his complex is rather large. It's two hundred units to a building. That's, that's very comprehensive. This is a unique and a boutique type of fifty-five and up where we have a specially designed units, a mirror, a mirror condominium. We have wood floors, stone interior, and we're going to have custom made, custom made cabinetry. It's going to be a high-end senior facility, but yet it'll still be affordable, much better than those that are the four and five thousand dollar range that exist. We just took out the bells and whistles to keep the cost down for seniors, but this is ideal for those that want to stay. That exist in Shelby, want to stay in Shelby, but they just don't want to have all the, uh, the problems attended with a house or even a condo. Jim, if you can go to the next slide, please. We have carefully designed and hired a architect under progressive, progressive associates. They designed a state-of-the-art building. If you can see the nice grays, it consists of a elevation of substantial brick, stone, and other durable materials so that we don't have any, um, any maintenance issues. It's a very attractive curb side appeal building. It is three-story, which is in compliance with the R twelve. We are allowed three-story up to forty feet, which we are in total compliance. And by the way, we do not request any variances whatsoever for this development. Okay, now what, some of the features of this development, it's a twenty-four hour secured facility. You must have the ability to plug in the code to get into the building. It's not open for just anyone. We have a twenty-four seven maintenance program that'll be professionally operated. We have a common gathering areas and social lounges, lounges, which I'll show you on the next page, but at this point, I'll just reserve that. We have the private balconies and porches, which are inside the building. They don't stick out of the building. So the building has a flush appearance, so everybody is inside. And that protects them from weather conditions and so on, and for deterioration purposes for the units. And we also provide three types of units. We have, um, two bedroom, one bath, two bedroom, two baths, and one bedroom, one bath. Now, the next page, Jim, if you could please turn to it. This is our floor plan and what we've designed for the building. If you look at the bottom of the floor plan, we have an entranceway with the lobby and to the left is, is the main office. This is the only part of the complex that would have an office. And then we have a reception area here, uh, which would be primarily utilized for the package, drop off a package and mail, like Amazon drop off and so on, or whatever company is utilized for that purpose. And if you look directly across from the lobby, we've created a lounge area, which is the real amenity, amenity in the building. This allows for congregation of our fifty-five and up grouping to sit down, engage in conversation, and perhaps, uh, play a game of cards, watch TV, et cetera, or just want to sit there. They want to knit. They want to just relax, uh, just want to get out of their units. Likewise, the top portion shows you, uh, the second, third, uh, second floors, they each have another lounge area to congregate. Now, our makeup is a variety of the two bedrooms and the one bedroom. The, uh, the next page shows you the actual floor plan. Okay, now, the, um, let's take to the left. We have, we have two types of bedroom units, uh, two bedroom units. The immediate left is a very unique design that we created. What we have is a bedroom on opposite sides of the unit. You got bedroom one to the right with its own walk-in closet, and then it has a bath. And to the immediate left, you have another bedroom, same design with a bathroom, walk-in closet. And then we have the middle with an open floor plan. You've got, you've got your countertop in the middle, and then you've got your open floor for all your furniture. And then you've got your open array of, uh, the cabinetry to give it a nice open effect in a home. The next unit is the, uh, two bedroom with one bath. So if you look to the right, you've got the two bedrooms. One has a walk-in closet, one has a traditional closet, but they share a, a large bathroom for those units. And then again, to the left, you see an open floor plan, which has that, uh, open counter area and a layout for where your, um, furniture would lay, and again, the custom cabinetry. And then to the right, we have for those that, um, just want one bedroom, you got, you got to the right of the floor plan, one bedroom, bath in the middle, walk-in closet, and to the left, again, another open plan. Now, the unique feature of the two-bedroom, two-bath is that you may get a couple of sisters or brothers up in age and they want to live together. They have complete privacy by having themselves on either side of the, uh, unit. That's one of the key factors that we considered when we had designed this particular product. I myself have had two independent living facilities, and I had a tremendous amount of amenities. And I, I designed this product because I think this is what is very much achievable and is going to be well received. And this being our flagship location, Shelby Township, we are now entertaining Washington Township. We secured land there. We are in Rochester Hills securing land. We got Novi property we've secured. Got McComb Township we're securing. We're going to be carrying this theme throughout. And it's going to be well received because we've got a lot of good feedback on it. And then Jim can turn to the next page. You'll see the actual elevation again, how it maps itself out in, in the black and white. Now, the top shows you the end elevation. This is what I referred to about the, uh, the resident that had apparently started this petition and had comments about, uh, her privacy being invaded. That side of the building is all that faces to the west. So we've, we don't, we have minimal, uh, viewing that goes in that direction. And as I've indicated, the landscaping takes that issue out, and she's a hundred and seventy-five feet away from this building. I doubt anybody can see into her backyard. She also has a very high white fence, uh, that you cannot see through anyway. Okay, and then the next page, Jim, if you could turn to it. We have a decorative gazebo barbecue area, uh, that's going to, that's going to be to the north. And then we have this extensive sets of walls that are on all the entrances that are on twenty-five and also on mound, all brick with a combination of stone lighting features. And then we have wrought iron. We have the pillar effect, uh, very beautiful curb appeal. It's state-of-the-art. It'll, it'll blend in very well in Shelby Township. It'll be a pearl. Uh, bear in mind, that site has been dormant. There was an old little hut that was in that property, and it sat there forever. And when Planning Commission had called me, said, could you please remove it? Within two hours, I had removed that eyesore. We've been cutting the property down, and what we have done at this point, we have laid out our plan with the walking trails inside. If we can go back briefly to, um, our site plan, which would be, uh, this one, uh, I'm not sure what number it is, but it's the Altair concept. Yeah, right there. We have sidewalk, go back, Jim, you had it, uh, the site plan, yeah. To, to the right, you can run your pen there. We have put sidewalks right along mound, and then we'll be adding sidewalks all along twenty-five. That takes care of any pedestrian issue, and it helps Shelby Township help interconnect with the, uh, with the trail system that we have put in Shelby Township for walking. And in addition to that, we have our own internal walking system that Jim had pointed out earlier that has the, uh, the features with the exercising and so on. Now, let's get all the way down to, um, after the gazebo page, Jim, let's, let's kind of spend a minute on this fitness trail and connected walks. As you, as I've indicated, our walking system will connect into Shelby sidewalk, but we have these variety of, uh, of durable items at our stations for exercising for our seniors and residents. They can stop along the trail system and do some, a fair amount of stretching and so on, which is perfect for them because we want to keep them healthy. And then they can also connect into Shelby's walking system by just going further, uh, to the west. So we've taken into consideration, you know, cardiovascular concerns. We've taken consideration about congregating and sharing time together. So they're not totally isolated, but we've also taken into consideration that we're making state-of-the-art units inside and the elevations outside. And we've taken into consideration that, you know, our seniors do want to live in Shelby, and they can't afford big homes anymore. It's just too much for them, either physically or, 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 uh, financially. Now, the next page has a list of items. The reason we're requesting the P U D concept. The P U D concept that we have, uh, applied for meets and demonstrates our qualification that we do meet all the criteria that's allowed under P U D, which incorporates all three zonings into one and making a, a minimal dense, uh, project. It's far less than what we would be allowed to under the, uh, the, uh, the current zoning. In fact, uh, I'll get that for the next one. The P U D is a contract that provides assurances that Altair will be constructed as presented with all amenities, landscape buffers, open space, and age-restricted active adult community. Basically, what that's saying is what you see is what you get. This is not like you do a straight rezoning, then you change your mind how you're going to do things. No. This P U D is a contract between the developer and the township, saying that if you're going to do this P U D, it must meet precisely what you're presenting to us, word for word, plan for plan. And that is why we sought that, so we would assure the neighbors that what you see is what you get, nothing different. We're not going to have a sleigh of the hand here and interpose something in here that is totally outside of what we're talking about. Because anything that's said tonight is a representation of what we're going to do. The next thing is the existing R twelve underlying zoning, which is sixty-four percent of the site. The proposed density that we're asking for is more akin to R ten because we're asking for a hundred and eight units, and if you multiply that times the roughly eight, eight acres or so of the site, we're pretty much in line with the R ten zoning, which is really a down zone. And also, if we had pursued the age-restricted density calculation, you would be basically in an R six zoning, and you would get double the, um, density allowance, which would bring you up to the, the, the hundred and sixty units, which that's something we really don't want to tangle with. I think it's, it's too much. I think this is appropriate what we have presented. Now, the next thing is we bring three parcels, as I've mentioned earlier, with the existing split zoning and three zoning districts into one master planned community. Okay, the property is never going to be developed under a, R one B to the west. The property's never going to be dealt, developed as an O one to the east, but the property is going to be developed under R twelve, because that's the reason we purchased it. We are going to put apartments in there, the, and, and, and indeed, the way we want to approach this is to have less of a bearing on the entire community, but put something that'll be useful, wanted, and, and less dense than we are allowed to be. This is not about just packing in all we can get. This is about packing in a realistic, beautiful complex. The last thing, and we got proposed density. Yes, uh, this is, this is thirty-three percent less than that was permitted under R twelve. I think I covered that. And it also removes the office building and any related traffic impacts. If you look at our impact statement, our traffic expert, Mike O'Cool, has indicated that the existing zoning with conventional apartments, not age-restricted, but, excuse me, conventional with the office would create two-thirds greater impact on traffic in the area. Why? Because an office building, you can have traffic from eight o'clock to six, come constantly going in and out. If you have a conventional apartment complex, there's going to be issues with the peak time in the morning and the afternoon. Well, we've eliminated all that with the age-restricted community and elimination of the office. As I said earlier, fifty-six percent of this site is open space with a large wooded area to the north and the landscaping buffers that we have existing all the way around, uh, to the west. Okay, and, uh, again, the last page, this is the site plan as we propose. We've done all the protective measures that we think is necessary for our residents. I've been in Shelby Townships since nineteen eighty-six. Uh, this is a long-term investment. We do not intend to sell this or flip to anybody. This is going to be kept in our portfolio. And I take pride in building first-class things in our township. I have several sites that are already under consideration. And I, I've shown my, my proof of the pudding by putting up, uh, Mount, uh, Ryan Road and, um, what is that, Ryan and, um, West Utica Road. I put a state-of-the-art gas station. It's probably one of the nicest gas stations in the country, and it's doing quite well. And I've got other projects that are, uh, coming into play. And there, and like I said earlier in the night, I, uh, my group bought the, uh, the Burger King on twenty-one and Ace. We're spending eight hundred thousand plus on that building to make it a state-of-the-art building. That's why we bought it, as opposed to just being a tenant. Now we're the tenant and the landlord. Again, we're keeping it for the long haul. So I know I'm long-winded, but there's a lot to this project. I just recently came across this petition that was dropped off today because I've been monitoring this thing for a couple of weeks, and we weren't aware of any issues with anybody until that came in. Now, the lady that, uh, had started that petition, she was claiming that this property, we're trying to rezone it to R twelve, but I told her, you're gravely mistaken. It is R twelve, and there's only a small portion to the west that is R one B, which is, we're not going to touch that other than landscaping and having a part of the road system, but it's ninety-five feet. I just want to make sure that we have that covered. And then I, I wanted, I want to point out the other fact that the P U D that we're proposing is actually a, a down zone. We're not only going from an R twelve to an R ten in all respects, but kicking the office out of the picture actually downzones the property because office is more intense than the multiple. But other than that, I really thank you, uh, for your time and consideration this matter. Uh, I've got Jim Epping available. Pardon me. I have, I have Jim Epping available as our landscape architect. Pete Snyder is our engineer. Uh, any other technical questions you have, you can address them. Likewise, I'm available for any questions and comments. Thank you.
How, how do you enforce the age restriction?
When the applicants come in, uh, there, there's a twofold process. They come in, they have to make an application for their credit, and then they have to give us a driver's license. And the first question that will be asked, because it'll be professionally maintained and run, you must be fifty-five and up. There's no exceptions. Okay, unless someone has a caretaker that has to come in, uh, you know, on a regular basis. Other than that, no, you must be fifty-five and up. Uh, it's no different than how Mr. Lachirko handles his. Plus, uh, the financing for this project, which will be somewhere between fifteen and eighteen million, you have to, uh, you have to comply with the requirements of the financial institution that you are a fifty-five and up community. And we have a contract with the township that says we're an active adult community, which is a specific provision of your ordinance. So we have to follow that, and if Shelby ever monitored or audited our situation, they would find that we're in total compliance. And if we're not, we have to get back into compliance, but I don't see that to be an issue. I've had this, uh, issue with one of my senior homes in Sterling, called Sterling Woods. I had a thirty-five-year-old person that had a handicap problem. He came in there and said he wanted to live in there. I says, I'm sorry, uh, about your, you know, your situation, but you're not fifty-five and up. You cannot get in here. You have to go to another, either rehab center, what have you. We don't, we don't allow anybody under fifty-five. And we've turned people away, and it's proven and well-tested that, uh, we can do that. It's not a discriminatory factor. The state has statutes regarding it, and our township has its own fifty-five and up ordinance. And that's, and that's how we'll be in compliance. And being part of the ownership here, I will certainly follow the rules.
I'll answer the board. Anyone have any questions?
Uh, Mr. Rogeri, I'm going to tell you upfront that I have no doubt in my mind that this is going to be a very well-built, high-quality development. I've seen some of the other ones you've done, so that is not, that's not an issue with me if this goes through. I like the internal trail that you have with the fitness stations. Question I have on that is how will those be maintained? Because they have something similar to that in Riverbend Park and they've kind of fallen on disrepair.
Well, uh, being uh one of the owners, and uh this will be my portfolio with my group, we will maintain this on a regular basis. If anything gets in disrepair, we will fix it because the last thing we want is any liability issues because we are extending ourselves uh that these are welcomed apparatuses to utilize. So we're going to always maintain it. And if something gets broken, we replace it. Something needs repair, we'll fix it. Uh, and it's in the internal portion of the complex, so it's only to really be utilized for the residents. Um, certainly, we wouldn't uh shy away if there's a if there's a uh person that's walking along, wants to test it out. We don't have a problem. We don't encourage it. But I certainly uh wouldn't frown upon someone in the public wanting just to take a look because, you know, it's for future reference. Or maybe they'll have a a relative that might be interested in this complex and they can see how well we thought about keeping our our seniors healthy. But certainly, we'll maintain it. And just like all the grounds, the grass, everything will be maintained, the shrubbery, shrubbery be maintained. We want to keep it first class, bottom line.
Now, you uh in your presentation, you said that the um that the zoning is closer to R ten or R six than in R twelve. So the question I have is, why are you, why don't you just ask for R six or R ten? Why are you um consolidating it as oh, R twelve?
Well, I what I have is because of the density that I'm I'm portraying, I'm not maximizing the density allowed under their R R twelve. I just wanted to point out that what I'm proposing falls in line with with R ten because there's a hundred and eight units. It's not a hundred and twenty units. Okay? And that's what that's just the point I wanted to make. Uh, and as far as the double density, yes, uh, R six. The zoning is almost irrelevant because I have the ability to uh handle the density with what I have. But if you did an R six and gave me the double density under an active adult community, I I would be up to, I would go from eighty to a hundred and sixty units, which I'm not going to do anyway. I only locked this in at a hundred and eight units. So I'm somewhere in between all this. But to clean it up under a P U D, you've got it all controlled. You've got, you've got a project that's zoned R twelve, but you're only basically utilizing the R ten or the R six with double density and even less than that. So I think it's important that that point be raised. But um as long as I can get my development in here, I don't really care how the zoning goes, but the main thing is what what I portray is what I want and and under this P U D, it's a contract. So the zoning almost becomes irrelevant. It's just that you are making a unified development out of this property is what you're doing.
Now, on the um property itself, to the west, you've got the R one B that you're pretty much just uh cutting that out and using that for screening going to the west. Since you're not using the R one B as buildable unit for that project, are you including that in the overall density of the whole project?
Well, I'm taking all ten point four three acres for my density calculations and I'm entitled to do that. Because I'm giving up the entire wetland to the north. I could take out that entire wetland. I've consulted with my wetland experts. We can wipe that out and replace it with mitigated uh wetlands from a land bank. And I could develop the whole R twelve with that whole green area. That can all be more apartments. I don't want to do that. I want to preserve that area. So I'm not trying to pack a lot in here, even though I can do it. So I'm taking the whole site and using it for my calculation to achieve my one oh eight units. But as you can see, that that parcel that is R one B is totally protected. It's strictly a landscaping and a trail. And and you've got to the north, you've got a uh detention pond. And then you've got to the north further, you've got the forested conservation area that will be just not disrupted. I mean, that that resident has complete, she has better protection than she has now for buffering. Because now you've got two old houses there that we acquired from we bought when we bought it, which is approximately uh let it was less less than a year ago. And they're renting it until we demolish them and start the development. But that's what she sees now. And that's all going to be gone. She's going to have beautiful landscaping to the uh to the east of her property. So I mean, basically.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, this is Jim Epping, uh landscape architect at uh nine three three six Sashabon, Clarkston, Michigan. Uh, Phil, to add to your answer to Mr. Turner, yes, that R one B is included in the density calculation. So so when we look at the ten acres and say um under R twelve, it would be eighty eighty units or a hundred and sixty with that active adult. Uh, we're also using that as our as part of the P U D as part of the calculation for density.
Okay, just one more question or comment. Last time when this came up, it was four years ago. I uh opposed the project because I was concerned about a lot of issues. We talked about uh traffic being one and the fact at that time that was for general rezoning. There was no plan to go along with it. I like the plan. However, when when you look at it from above, I like the layout and the look of the plan. When you look at it from street level and you see three stories of the building, that is an issue that I'm grappling with. I'm not sold on it yet. I'm not saying I couldn't be, but I'm just at this point, I'm not sold on the three stories of the building. I just want to get that out there. So that's.
Uh, the main thing to keep in mind is that under your ordinance, under R twelve, you're allowed three story. It's already in there and it can go up to forty feet. And we have complied with it to a T. We're not asking for variance. That's what's actually allowed. And then Pete Snyder, our engineer, can verify that fact.
Thank you.
Okay, sorry.
What what are the price points are you anticipating for?
Uh, the rentals, the rentals are going to be probably the one bedroom is going to go very close to thirteen hundred a month. And uh the two bedrooms, they're going to be fifteen sixteen hundred uh per month range. Once we get a better handle on our construction costs and so on, uh, because we wanted to start this project next year, uh, we'll have a better handle, but it is going to be on the higher end of rental because it's a boutique type development. It's an upscale development. Uh, as I told you earlier, we're going to be putting in a lot of stone, custom chemistry and wood flooring in it. It's going to be a beautiful unit. So we we're going to command a higher price or premium uh for our rents.
Hey, why don't you why don't you review real quickly again, there's a lot of information that came at the setback of the building from both twenty-five and mound. And then what are you doing to buffer? I know you've got your monument, your your two monument signs on each side. But are you berming? Are you is there is there going to be some kind of berm and and?
Well, I'll let I'll let Jim uh talk about that and and Pete, because one of the key things is you have to keep in mind, we have to have proper drainage on the site. And sometimes berms aren't aren't as effective as you think. Uh, so we, I think we tailor it with the extensive landscaping and with the brick uh entrance ways. But I'll I'll let Jim and Pete tackle that question and then I.
Yeah, so I mean, I I I I live very close to this site, um drive by it multiple times every day. Um, but I agree with Mr. Turner. The thing that I need to grapple with is, and I'm, you know, I'm not anti-big, but but again, is it out of scale, you know, and it's looking at a two dimensional, it's kind of hard to get that sense of, you know, is it going to be too much in an area that frankly doesn't have that kind of architecture and kind of building, you know? So why don't you why don't you try to offer us some comfort there?
And Pete could add some some uh statistical details, but I think I I understand your point. I think it's a good point. Um, what we did specifically, I mean, we we've got kind of the advantage of having um just three buildings. And so we're able to set those back from from twenty-five mile, we are set back, these buildings are set back of um uh almost seventy feet. So they're going to be set back there, they're they're really quite a distance. And that's from a right of way set back. But then we've got a really wide right of way. So from the edge of the uh curb, we're going to be back about ninety feet. What we did is is both the ordinance and then we we pretty much doubled the ordinance in terms of landscape requirements. So we've got just almost what I would call an algorithm out front here. We've got uh flowering trees, deciduous trees, evergreen trees. It's going to be really kind of a park-like setting. So yes, you will see the buildings through here, but there would be really kind of uh bits and pieces of views as you go down this this really uh you know, kind of a greenway. We put a lot of park benches up here. We've got both the public sidewalk as well as some eternal sidewalks. So it's going to feel like a park as you drive up and up and down twenty-five as well as up and down mound. Um, and these buildings have that residential character. They've got the the pitch roof. Yes, they are three stories, but uh very residential in character. And so based on the setback, based on the the beautiful landscape, I think it's, I you know, I think it's just going to be a beautiful uh kind of a park out there. But answer the question?
Yeah, that's good. Um, back to the board. Um, you can share that if you'd like. Anyone else wish to comment or ask any questions?
Mr. Chairman. We look in at this project here and the concern that we all probably have is the R one B converting to R twelve. But what we see in the plans, the R one B is only used for a landscaping. Can the developer, I guess this question will be either for Mr. Kirk or the planner, can the developer submit a different way of change of zoning for that landscape purposes? Or that's the only choice they have uh to move it to R twelve? And on the hand, uh, the regular height of the building that Mr. Turner was talking about is I believe thirty-five feet and the developer going to forty feet. So I don't know, in my opinion, that the five feet might not make a huge difference to the height of the building between the thirty-five, the normal height to a three story height and forty feet.
Yeah, I don't think it would be wise to leave that that strip there for landscaping. Only then you're into a split zone on a property or else you have separate properties. I think that's the purpose of the P U D is although it's going to R twelve, then you're tying it all in together. So I think it's serves the purpose.
Anyone else wish to comment?
Mr. Chairman, I address uh Mr. Dale's point uh about we got in the height. When I took a closer look at the ordinance and your film and the team, um, I believe at least the way I read the ordinance, that that R twelve, and it's actually R eight through R twelve allows a forty foot height building to the mid point of the roof, the way uh the township measures it. And these beat that ordinance. These are forty foot, the ordinance, uh, I believe, where we allows that uh forty foot height, not three five.
Uh, Jim, you want to turn to that page? We have it on uh your list of documents. You want to just show that for the screen? So there it is. Yeah. R eight through R twelve allows, you know, up to three story of forty feet. And we're in compliance. We're not exceeding it front side or rears. So um I know it may not be totally characteristic with some of the uh development that's been in the area, but this is what's allowed. And because we are minimizing our density and not going for the max, this is, you know, I've got to achieve a certain density to even do the project. This is a a substantial investment. And I'm not crunching in more than than we can chew and trying to squeeze, you know, the area into a lot of units. I got three buildings. There are thirty-six uh units in each building. Now, when you got La Chirico's project on Shelby, he's got two hundred units in a building. Two hundred and he's two and a half story over there. I mean, that's it's massive. Now, there's people that like that living condition, but there's a lot of people that like this type of product. And this is the alternative uh option that I'm providing. It's uh, it's not directly competing because I think we're at a higher level. And uh that attractiveness of that building, um, you know, is is that we have the three stories, but it it's like like uh Jim mentioned earlier, very, very residential and it's in its composition. Uh, Jim, turn back to the main page uh with our building. You can see that the grays, the brick, the stone with a pitched roof. I mean, it looks, they look like nice, like a big house is what it is. So it's it's not going to be something.
I understand this this process can be, you know, make appear to be a little bit exhausting, but frankly, this is this is how, and you know this, this is how we, we're going to, we were going to take our time, you know?
Well, I I respect that. I do.
So thank you.
I don't know. Pete, did you have any comments?
No, I really didn't have any comments. The setbacks or the proposed setbacks are listed on the plan there, of course. Uh, mound road, we're a hundred and seventy-three back to building one. Uh, twenty-five mile road, buildings one and two are both set right on the setback line of a hundred and twenty from the center line. That's roughly, I'm scaling, that's roughly eighty feet to the edge of the roadway that exists right now. And then, of course, uh, over on the west property line, where we're trying to keep as much space as we can, building two is a hundred and seventy-six feet from the west property line. And uh, building three is a hundred and eighty feet from the west property line. But again, that's, we're sort of deliberately uh favoring this to the east to to preserve the the green belt on the west. So but yeah, those aspects are shown on the on the site plan already.
Thank you, Pete.
Okay, thank you. If there's no other comments from uh the board, uh, we'll open the public hearing. This is the only public hearing the planning commission will hold on this rezoning request and special land use. Your remarks will be entered into the record for township board evaluation. The planning commission is a recommending body. The township board ultimately uh will make uh a decision on on a recommendation. Uh, at this point, anyone uh in the audience is is free to ask any questions, offer any comments. What I'll do is make notes of all of those. After everyone's asked their questions or made their comments, then I'll bring the petitioner back to answer those those questions or or respond.
Edward Cybalski, C Y B Likenboy, U L S K I, five four eight eight four Gemini Drive. Uh, the question I have is any egress or entrance on twenty-five mile road? And uh, my concern is a safety concern. Twenty-five mile road is a high density corridor, one of the few flow-throughs from Rochester in A thing west. Uh, we had two fatalities already on twenty-five and mound. And we're just going to add to that density of traffic. And that traffic is forty-five miles per hour. Now, I travel the speed limit on twenty-five. I've been passed up on twenty-five in the turn lane. So it lends itself not only to higher speeds, but some reckless driving. Mike, I feel that the only way to rectify the safety issue is when the county puts in four lanes with a passing lane or reduces the speed limit to thirty-five. Thank you.
What else wish to comment?
Gary DeBaldo, five three two four St. Richards, Shelby Township, Michigan. How are you doing? Um, I have a safety and concern issue for the subdivision that's abutted to this complex. We've been here for since nineteen seventy-one. We have uh, we have blacktop roads, no sidewalks. Our kids play in the street. We're currently getting people cutting through to avoid the corner of twenty-five and mound. They're cutting through our subdivision to get around, to get around this situation, just like the gentleman before. We, there's a, there's a traffic issue that we have to address. And there's, there's, there's a situation to where the kid, you know, this has been going on, this has been ongoing. This is not something that's, this is something that this this subdivision has developed and been ongoing for the years. It's been in play. What can, what is going to be done to ensure the safety of the kids in the neighborhood that abuts this this property? That's one of my questions. The next question I have, I guess, um, with the seniors that are going into this fifty-five and older, is there any uh income limits assigned to them to be able to get into the complex? Those are my questions.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Next.
Hello.
Get your name and address, ma'am. Does anyone else wish to comment on this?
Uh, yeah, I would please.
Okay, your name, address?
My name is Ray Coolick, address five five six two nine Nocturne Court. Um, I'm in the same subdivision as the last gentleman. Um, I my questions originally, again, I give a couple, but one of the issues I have again relates to the three story. I guess if you did canvas all the people who are around the neighborhood, then none of them would have ever really known that you could put up a three story building um in this particular neighborhood. When I drive through the neighborhood, even within multiple square miles of. even within multiple square miles of this, I don't know that I've seen much of a third-story building anywhere. Let alone this one getting put in in the location um, that Mr. Ajary is proposing. And and for the record, that was a nice, you know, uh, presentation that he put up and the nice slides that, you know, residents don't have an opportunity to, you know, we just look at it and see it, but I say this in the nicest way, I find it kind of condescending on his part where he, if you go back and listen to what he said, the way he described it was, hey, look, residents, we have, um, we have this land already secured as the R twelve. And we're, we can put up these buildings, but we're doing you a favor by spreading it out into a bit more land if you let us. At the same time, going to the area about the wetlands, hey, look, look, residents, I could, I could be a mean guy here and take out the wetlands and put the building over where the wetlands are, and that'll irritate you anymore, but in my mind, as Mr. Ajary was saying it, look, we're going through with this. And either we're gonna jam it into the area that's there and make it look worse than it is, or else the commission goes along with it and votes to approve it. When they talk about distances of thirty feet, that's uh, or sixty feet, that's not that, that's not that big of areas of where he, you know, how they describe it, how things are set back. Um, the, the other thing is that I'd like to ask, one of the questions I have here for uh, the chairman is my understanding is that the residents signed a petition that I know at the time was over two hundred signatures of people who opposed um, this, this rezoning and the, and the putting up of those buildings. Now, given the COVID situation, had, and I know what the rules are, and Mr. Ajary is going by the rules, and I respect that. But the fact that with a short notice under COVID situation, if, if the group who is against this, which I understand is more than two hundred people already, if they were given more time and ability to go door to door to make more people aware of what is going on, and even in the sub I live, not right, right around the corner, the first entrance west of mound, none of my neighbors received any notice whatsoever. And we had to spread it of word of mouth over the last couple of days to get a petition out. So I, I, I'm a firm believer that if we had more time, we would, we could double that, we could triple the number of people who would be opposed to it. Uh, and I'm wrapping up here, the three, a three-story building while allowed under the rules is already kind of been alluded to by the, by the chairman and and others. And that aesthetically, it does not fit in that area there. The rule is the rule, and I guess we'd get screwed by the fact that how it was originally zoned to be able to go to three stories. Okay, well, that's the rule, but had we known that, we probably would have petitioned that a long time ago. People have moved in here in the, in the subdivision, in this surrounding area, not to have something jammed into us or or on us, onto that corner. That's what one gentleman mentioned. The traffic, whether or not there's a proposal down the road, who knows what finances are available or ever going to be to widen twenty-five mile road? Twenty-six mile road does not go through east and west. Twenty-four mile road does not go through east and west, nor does twenty-two and really twenty-three if you, if you uh, take zigzag around it. This brings a lot more traffic to twenty-five mile road. Again, I, I, I want to stay for the record because I was, I was taken back by it. Mr. Ajary's, again, what he's doing i- is a great idea in terms of where he's doing it. But a lot of what he said was a sales pitch. He showed us floor plans, he showed us uh, how the trees are gonna look. But he didn't, it comes back to the same issue for the residents. Do we want a three-story building put up in an area where there's no other three-story buildings around? And then just be stuck with it because he already bought the R twelve land that's available. Thank you very much. Oh, Mr. Chairman, can you, I'm sorry, can you tell me how many people signed that petition so everyone on the call knows?
I don't, I don't have that petition.
My understa- my understanding is that it was sent in. Does any of the commission members have that number?
Tell you what, the planners, yeah, we'll, we'll speak later in the, in the meeting.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Uh, next person?
Matthew Polium, twenty-five mile road.
Which address?
Five-zero-zero-one, twenty-five mile road.
Thank you.
Um, I have multiple concerns with this issue, and I agree one hundred percent with the gentleman that just spoke. Um, first of all, regarding the fifty-five and over. I actually lived in Park Manor, which is supposedly a fifty-five and older complex, and at the time I was thirty-nine. Um, I know he built many more buildings, um, and I know numerous people that live there that are under the age of fifty-five. My concern with that, how is he going to um, restrict that? Um, Lachirco cannot rent those buildings out, so he's renting them out to anybody. Um, the second problem I have is traffic, just like the last gentleman said. I also live next to the new development on twenty-five mile road. Cedar Cove, which is, I believe, thirty-eight or thirty-nine homes, um, which I was completely opposed against, and nothing happened with that. I did sign the petition, I know there was over two hundred signatures on that. Um, regarding Mr. Rogiro, or Rogiri, if I say your name wrong, I apologize. Um, the, the buildings sound great, and what you're doing actually sounds good as far as the whole aesthetics and not taking away the wetlands like Lachirco did. Um, but the three stories is gonna be an eyesore. And also, I'm concerned with traffic. With the buildings going on between Van Dyke and Shelby, what are we supposed to do to the people that live on twenty-five mile road? How, how, how do we even pull out of our driveway? We have a whole other time pulling out of our driveway right now. Um, I could say many, many things. I'm, I'm absolutely opposed to it. I'm a citizen, a resident of Shelby Township, I pay my taxes, I bought a home here for a reason. Shelby Township is supposed to be all about green space. My wife also has a business in Shelby. Um, what is going on right now with the amount of de- development is just astounding. Um, I go on Realtor.com and I go on Zillow, and I see the amount of homes that are for sale that are not selling. I see the apartments that are vacant. I, I don't know why there needs to be any more building at this time. Let everybody finish what is needed to be done and see how it goes before you approve anything else. This is a taxpayer of Shelby Township, and that's pretty much all I have to say.
Okay, thank you. Uh, next.
You're welcome.
Oh, yes, good evening, uh, Mr. Chairman, uh, Planning Committee, Mr. Jerry, fellow residents, uh, Bryant, Missouri, five-six-nine-two Field Book Drive, Shelby Township, Michigan, Prescott Woods subdivision, just north. Uh, express some concern about the rezoning of this property for many reasons. Number one, uh, family of five, three young boys that walk to school, both Eisenhower as well as Mallow. And today, under its current state, uh, there is high traffic and safety is an utmost concern. Uh, that intersection at twenty-five and mound in the morning at school is backed up, you can't even make a left going east into Eisenhower. In addition to that, heading home from work, heading east on twenty-five to mound, it's all the way backed up to Shelby. And to the gentleman's point that just spoke, uh, specific to Cove with forty uh, additional units coming in on twenty-five mile road, safety and congestion is, is a serious concern of residents. Um, you know, adding the units that he's already proposed under the R twelve and asking for incremental, uh, I think is, is unrealistic uh, to how densely populated this area is. If you look at the square mile between Shelby and mound and twenty-five and twenty-six, and in not necessarily categorizing it to a certain kind of apartment and or condo, there's over a thousand units. That is a highly concentrated geographic area with a lot of traffic. And all we're doing is, is adding to that, and we have one lanes going each way. And to the point made earlier, that twenty-five miles of thruway uh, to get from adjacent cities as well as townships. So, uh, as a resident, concerned about the safety. Uh, again, there's a lot of traffic that goes uh, south on mound, uh, speed limit there is fifty miles an hour. Uh, there's been accidents there over the last several years as well. Again, why safety is important, and I think adding uh, a property like that on a major intersection, uh, to me is a potential fifty-five-year-old or looking for a parent, perhaps, to me, wouldn't be something that would be the ideal location uh, for such a highly uh, concentrated and traffic area and even close proximity to the school district with Mallow and Eisenhower.
Good, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else wish to comment?
Yes, Darlene Bupolium. Okay, Darlene Bupolium, five-zero-zero-one, twenty-five mile road. I have to attest that the previous gentleman's statements are correct. Um, we've lived here for six years. In those six years, on twenty-five mile alone, the traffic has been so congested. There has been at least, at least two huge accidents right in front of her home. Right i- i- in, within the year. Um, and, and that's been every year. And the, the, the traffic on twenty-five mile road, as the previous gentleman stated, is a mean thorough through from city to city to city. There is no easy access from, let's say, Rochester to Shelby to Chesterfield or anything without zigzagging all over the place. Adding more traffic and regardless, permanent traffic, I'm not talking about business hour traffic. It is just unbelievable how much traffic that we witness on a daily basis. We try to enjoy our time on our front porch, it's literally impossible because it is non-stop traffic. And with the, and, and people yelling, the music, it just, it's ridiculous. That aside, with the development that's already occurring right here, Cedar Cove Development by Lachirco, it is going to uptake our traffic tremendously. There is going to be thirty-eight homes, roughly. You figure that there's going to be two cars per household. Not to mention any teenagers they may have and within driving age. How many cars do we need already traversing on twenty-five mile road? It is a huge thoroughfare. It, it's just, it's not even comprehensible how you can add that many more vehicles. And even if it's a fifty-five-plus home set, there's going to be a minimum of two cars per household. Not to mention all their visitors. Maybe there's caretakers for some reason or another. It, it adds to the congestion that already occurs. There is constantly backup of traffic from Dequinder and, and, um, on twenty-five all the way through to Van Dyke, non-stop. It takes us sometimes ten to fifteen minutes to turn left out of our driveway. It just, it, it's impossible. We're supposed to be a green space community. Green spaces are being removed. The development next to us is now, it used to be home to coyotes, natural ponds that were replanted, that were completely stocked with fish, deer, um, raccoons, stones, everything, everything that, there was every single kind of uh, eagle from some back there that you can imagine. There was a prairie.
You can address that, that, that is, that, that, that horse is out of the barn, you know, that for whatever.
Yeah, I know, and no one listened to us then.
Right, no one listened to us then.
And, and no one is listening now. It, it, the, the development still happened. There was a huge pond that was removed. There was, there was a hundred, hundred-year-old turtle back there that lived. We saw her. And now, where did she go? The, the green space of Shelby is being eradicated.
Okay, ma'am, I think, I think.
You need to remove that pond.
We understand your point. We've got, we've got a number of people that didn't want to comment, so what, what.
Yeah, well, you know what, you need, you need to just stop overdeveloping. And we don't need any more development in this area. We need to fill the homes that are already in existence. Thank you for listening. Bye.
Uh, next?
I would love to chat. I'd love to chat if possible.
I would speak after.
Hello?
Yes.
My name is Ted Zodos. I'm the president of Aurora Park subdivision, five-four-eight-zero-eight Aurora Park. Needless to say, our subdivision is a thoroughfare of cars traversing between twenty-five and twenty-four mile road. As you add other traffic to the area, creates an extreme hardship to our densely populated area. So the issue like everyone stated is a concern with traffic. I appreciate what you're trying to do. It's an economic windfall for that group. It's part of his portfolio. Fantastic for him. Well, our portfolio is called life, and our Aurora Park subdivision has been bombarded by traffic. You are, the, the area around here around Eisenhower High School is extremely congested, and you don't have school now. So one must consider our eighty-five residents of Aurora Park as being an extreme concern to this, this development. Um, because like I said, as others have mentioned, we're, we're bombarded with traffic throughout the entire day. Um, so please, on behalf of our residents, we are a big no to this development. Thank you.
Ma'am, you had, yes, go ahead.
Yes, thank you. Abra Walters, five-three-zero-two, St. Richard Drive. I am in the same subdivision that the past three or four people are also in. I also was one of the people that signed the petition, and there was two hundred and one signatures, the last I was told yesterday. For the gentleman asked earlier.
I need to move from our, our crack secretary that it was two hundred and nine.
Oh, okay, thank you. Um, my, my first concern is, who does this benefit? Does it benefit anyone except the owner or the, uh, the, the? I just don't see how it could benefit anyone that lives here. There are all the empty senior apartments in our square mile, luxury apartments going up in our square mile on twenty-six and mound. The new sub that was just spoken of from the lady before me. I have four children, two right now that walk to Mallow, Mallow and Eisenhower, two that will be in the near future. And we've been here thirteen years, and there have been tons of new families that have moved in. Since we moved in, all have children that are all gonna be walking that dangerous, it's a dangerous walk. As was already said, I know personally of two fatalities. And the sign at the church just got knocked down, and it's so dangerous for the kids to be walking. That's my num- number one concern are the kids walking, I must say. to be walking, that's my num- number one concern, are the kids walking, I must say. And I just don't see how it could benefit anyone, not to mention our beautiful Shelby and the trees and the wonderful what we have here. Thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am. If anyone else wish to comment?
Hello?
Okay, your name and address, please?
Joe Chirilla, five three six one two, Sophia, Willseck Manor. I I have a question first, I don't know if you guys can answer. How, under the current zoning of the current parcels, how many um units can be built under the uh, what is it, the R twelve? Do you know how many units can go in there currently in the three story buildings that are allowed?
Quickly answer that one because he did present, it was eighty.
Eighty, okay. Uh, thank you for answering that. My my main concern is 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 just the traffic, the congestion. I live within a mile of the area, I drive by there every day for work. Um, without school, it's a headache, with school, it's impossible. I I go the opposite way to to go around a different square mile. Uh, I mean, to add these buildings, to add more occupants than you want, you you say there's going to be less people because they're not traveling as much as a um professional building would, but you you're going to have people leaving the apartments all the time. I mean, if they're elderly, fifty-five is not that old, I'm sure a lot of people listening and maybe some on the border fifty-five and don't consider themselves old. Uh, they're very active, they come and go constantly, um, you're going to have visitors constantly, the professional buildings most likely close on the weekend. Um, for for what's proposed and and what you want to do, the footprint you need, I understand, you know, you need it bigger with the zoning so you can fit more people in. Uh, I I like, you know, what I hear, but find a way to make it fit on on what what is there and what it's zoned for currently. To to have a change now in this area where there where there's so much traffic, it it's it it's not right. And the way the the one caller said, the way he kind of threatened that you're going to do it anyways, then then go ahead, don't threaten us, you know, to to try to squeeze that by everyone listening is an insult to their intelligence. And to do that, if you want to go ahead and do that, go ahead. You know, to try and get your way by threatening like that, it it's just in poor taste. So, you know, obviously, everyone knows maybe you can do that, but to go ahead and say it like that, it 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 just didn't sit well with me. I know it didn't sit well with a lot of people, and it kind of was an insult to their intelligence almost right to their face. Uh, that's all I have to say, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Um, you know, in a perfect world, someone would kind of come in and buy that property and and turn it into a park, and they would have done it to all the all the all the uh um subdivisions and properties in Shelby Township. You know, unfortunately or fortunately, this still is a desirable community, you know, and people buy property with the idea of developing and putting things in. So what this process is, is to figure out, okay, what, given the the constraints of the property, you know, is and, you know, and what the current zoning and what the current uses that have been approved, that were approved when this person bought that property, would be allowed to then to develop. So, yeah, I mean, you know, zero, you know, there's no development, there won't be one more car that's put on the twenty-five mile road. But, you know, there are traffic studies and there are, you know, this is a consideration, you know, when the zoning is done is to, you know, um, how that property is being allowed to develop, so. Um, and it is a frustrating process to go through. Um, and I live probably closer to the most of the people that spoke tonight to this intersection, okay, very close. Um, so I, you know, I understand, you know, its limitations and also, you know, understand, you know, the the issues that folks have with, but, you know, our role and everyone who's on this board lives in the township, various areas in the township, um, many of us work in the township, is to figure out, okay, collectively, seventy-five to eighty thousand people that live here, kind of what's in all of our best interest. So.
So who do you want to destroy Shelby Township?
No, see, I listen, I lived, I I my family moved out to Shelby Township in nineteen seventy-three, okay? So I've seen a lot of development, I've seen a lot of roads expanded, okay? You know, to say, you know, well, I moved in here, okay, everyone stop, nobody else can move in here, you know, it's just, it's it's not legal, not reasonable, so what we need to do is just operate within, you know.
Well, I'll say this, you know, the citizens that live here, um, they they bought property for a certain reason. They like the green space, they like the woods, they like the natural habitat.
Yeah, but that's, but that, but that isn't.
So you're taking that away.
No, listen, your house, the house that you lived in.
No, no, how do you, how do you mean no? I don't understand how you mean no. So you so you're gonna, you're gonna, you're gonna put in houses?
Everyone gets, everyone gets one crack.
Or condos or whatever you're gonna put in, but you're not taking away from the natural habitat. How, explain that.
Are you, sure you've commented before? Okay. So next person, if someone hasn't commented?
Yeah, hello?
Yes.
Hi, this is Linda Wisnet, um, I live right next door, uh, fifty-five ninety-nine twenty-five mile road. Um, I'd like to clarify something about the petition. It wasn't my petition, it was the neighborhood petition, and a group of neighbors got together. And with the covid, um, we didn't want to go door to door, uh, so people came to us, we posted it, and there were a lot of concerned people. And most of the people are concerned about the traffic, and on twenty, the people that live on twenty-five mile road, they can't always get out. If you want to go east, you can't. And what the gentleman said about people cutting through the subdivision, I'm guilty of that because the traffic is so backed up, I had to cut through the subdivision because either that or I had to go all the way to Shelby and go the opposite direction. And um it's just, right now, the schools are closed, and the traffic is still really, really busy right now. And you have a lot of people that are working from home also because of covid. And I'm also concerned about the three story buildings. So uh I think that's too high for the area, and I know he says he's got the right to. And also about, um, he's going to build apartments anyways. When I talked to him today, uh, he said if he couldn't go ahead with this, he was going to build regular apartments, and we were going to get all kinds of riffs raft moving in, so. So I can't even like the area either, so, um, that's all I have to say, so, thank you.
Anyone else wish to comment, if there's a comment? You've already, you've already spoken, ma'am.
Thank you, thank you.
You blocked me out there.
Hand raised, area code five eight six nine five seven, would you like to speak?
Hello, this is Jeff Walters, five three zero two, St. Richard. Um, I also live in the uh sub that everyone else seems to live in here. Um, I understand that you have to have places for people to live and apartments are part of, are part of life, but you do have the power to, you know, decide what kind of life we want to have around here, and if the object, I guess, is to fit as many people as we can into the square mileage that we have, then I guess, you know, apartments are a great thing. But if you take a ride around the square block there, we have plenty of apartments around the area. I too am concerned about the traffic. Um, but, you know, beyond that, I just don't know if we need more apartments in the area, and that is something that you do have control over. Um, so, thank you very much.
Hey, thank you. Anyone else? One, twice. Okay, I'll bring it back to the board, and I'll call the planner to offer her comments.
Okay, good evening, Chairman Moffett and members of the board. Um, I just want to give you a quick overview, uh, the presentation that was presented by Mr. Rogiri uh pretty much covered my my review. Um, under the plan, new developments, um, they are allowed as a special land use in all zoning districts, and intend to achieve the following objectives. Encourage innovation and land use and variety in design layout and type of uh structure required. Achieve economic and efficient uses of land, natural resources, energy and provisions of public services and utilities. Encourage provision of useful open space where appropriate, and provide better housing, employment and commercial opportunities particularly particularly situated to the needs of the township. So based on the, under these criteria, the PUD option is appropriate for the site based on the natural features that exist on the northeast portion of the property. Um, as Mr. Rogiri explained, this is ten point four three acres of land proposing a hundred and eight units of age restricted adult multiple family living units. This this parcel history on this, um, back in two thousand sixteen, if you recall, this was up for rezoning, and uh the township board concurred with the planning commission at that time and denied this request, and basically the denial was based on, um, you know, it it was just a straight rezoning. Um, here we have a PUD with this rezoning, and I don't um particularly have any issues with this because you do have the PUD agreement to abide by in this rezoning request. It's not coming in um as a straight rezoning, and you don't know what's going to happen happen on this property after the fact. Um, the land use pattern recommended by the current master plan supports low density residential development with large, mainly lots. Um, but however, the, you know, the proposed rezoning and site plan are not consistent with the master plan, but the site is, like Mr. Rogiri mentioned already, two-thirds split zoned, um, multiple family, single family and office. Uh, and that is correct, a majority of the parcel, the R one B parcel that is to the west, is being used for landscape landscape buffers, so I can't.